We'd like to welcome everyone to the June 8th meeting of the New Bern Board of Aldermen. If you would join me in a prayer. Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us tonight. You have promised, were two or three gathered, you will be in our midst. And we ask that you charge us with the responsibilities of leading our city and doing those things that would be pleasing to thee. In your name we pray. Amen. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Matt Flirt, would you call the row?
Alderman Bingle.
Here.
Alderwoman Harris. Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey. Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, at this time, let's go request petitions to citizens tonight. First one would be Mr. Woods. James Woods, would you like to come forward? Give us your name and address for the record.
Good morning, or sorry, good afternoon, my day. Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen. Last month I had a request. I haven't heard back on it, so I'm here again for that request, but since I hadn't heard anything, I'm asking for eight hundred and fifty thousand this time, alright? For the Duffy Field and the Pembroke Community. Also, I would like to be a part of the committee who selects the next city manager. I think Foster is a good gentleman, everything I have dealt with him. But as I look around this room, for many years that I've been here, you had two people that was in leadership positions that looked like me. Now you have one, okay? I would like to be on that board as a committee member for the next selection of the city manager for the city of New Bern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. My name is Jamar Wallace, Chairman of the Greater Duffy Field Residence Council, and I reside at sixteen oh one apartment, B as in boy, Hazel Avenue. It's a pleasure to once again be before you. It's been awhile, as we all know. The Greater Duffy Field Residence Council has been in existence for upward of twenty years, sponsoring many events and initiatives and partnering with many organizations working toward the common goal of improving the quality of life for our residents in the Greater Duffy Field community. I come before you tonight to put forth a request on behalf of the Greater Duffy Field Residence Council and the Greater Duffy Field residents to dedicate a room in the new recreational facility to the Greater Duffy Field Residence Council and the residents of the Greater Duffy Field community, to be utilized by the council, other organizations, and citizens for meetings and other events in the community. This space would also be a place to display Duffy Field community archives, history, and heritage. Suggestions have also been to possibly have a local artist to do a collage dedicated to the various organizations that service the residents in this community. Details of the contents of such a space is still undetermined, but the council and the residents felt it appropriate to make this request now while the facility is still in the developmental phase. We thank you for your consideration of this request and look forward to continuing to work, to continuing the good works in the Greater Duffy Field community and, of course, to the completion of the new facility. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you.
Next one is David Beck. Is that right?
How's everyone this evening?
Doing good.
Good, good, we're doing good, we're doing good. I brought your attention, I believe, last month also, that we're attempting to see if the city would allow us to change the ordinance, or if the city would change the ordinance to allow miniature goats as a possible pet option. They're quiet animals, they're clean animals, they're smart animals, they're great little animals. They're actually kind of funny and comical because, well, they're goats, but they're miniature. They're only like maybe up to my knee, if that. Sixty pounds is the max. They're just great little animals, they're friendly, they don't put out much of an odor. And, you know, the way I see it, if pot-bellied pigs were allowed inside of city limits, you know, I would not have a miniature goat or two. I just want consideration and I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that is the, that is all of the petitions to citizens. At this time, we have consent agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to set the consent agenda as is. I second it.
Motion and same as in front of the discussion. Saying in all favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Mr. Hughes, let's go with the aye number six.
Mayor Alderman, item six is to conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an amendment to Article twenty-one, New Bern Historic District of the City Code ordinances. The planning and zoning board unanimously approved changes to the historic district guidelines at their May fourth meeting. Two additional guidelines are proposed with respect to foundations. After conducting a public hearing, order is asked to consider amendment to Article twenty-one. A memo from Matt Shelley, the city planner, is attached to your packet. He's here to answer any questions if you have it.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Let's see, we have...
Can you move the microphone closer?
Is that better? No? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So, on the screen you see the current guidelines for foundations. There are only four, and then we are proposing to add two more. These numbered four point one point five and four point one point six. The first one, when elevating a structure in flood zones, limit elevation to the minimum height required by ordinance. When elevating a structure that is not in a flood zone, limit elevation to two feet above the current height. And then four point one point six is minimize the visual impact of tall foundation walls by introducing a combination of landscaping, grading, and terraced retaining walls. And I suppose I should underscore that this, these are guidelines only for the two historic districts, the downtown historic district and the riverside historic district, nowhere else in the city.
Can I ask a question?
Any question?
What happens in the overlay districts? Does this, would there be any, would this have any impact on the overlay, which Gent is an overlay district?
No.
Okay.
Just those two, they're the two local districts that are governed by the guidelines and the guidelines being administered by the HPC.
Thank you.
Question, on the, in the riverside area, this is Germaine to the riverside area.
That's correct.
So, some of the homes over there, I guess are in flood area.
Yes.
And they're doing the beach design, kind of concept, A-Bay posts, and this would not preclude that in the flood areas.
Well, those examples are outs.
They're not in the district.
They're not in the historic district, correct.
As long as not, or have they ever been done in the...
We need to be mindful because riverside is kind of interesting. As you come down North Craven Street, the right-hand side, that undeveloped property is not in the historic district, but the left-hand side of the street is in the district. And again, you go, I mean, it's a little bit different. You get over the railroad tracks, I believe, and you'll have it. Now, as we get waterfront development, which I assume will happen in the next ten years, you know, I see that happening, I guess this would apply to that and those standards would have to be met, because I believe that property on that side of the street, the Maola property, that would be in the district. Is that correct?
Uh, no.
So, Maola is not?
None of those are in the historic district.
So, the whole side of North Craven Street on, as you're coming down to riverside, in the right-hand side is in the historic?
Right, the east side.
Just the left.
The riverside of North Craven, none of that is in the historic district.
Interesting.
And then it ends at North Avenue.
Correct.
And then at North Avenue is where you see the beach, the beach homes.
Do you have a map in your presentation of that area?
No, I don't.
Okay. Well, I know that the Fire twenty-two changed architecture in New Bern as have other events. And so, I think the flood of Hurricane Florence is, has and will continue to change architecture in New Bern. So, what I'm trying to make sure we're to get, we're in sync with is that when that project gets going or others, and someone comes right back and reverses this decision, then we're gonna have a lot of people that might have wanted to go up another foot or two that weren't able to. And it's gonna be a worst case then than it is now if we are here, here, and now here. So, if the board is ready to go and stake the system with this thing, fine.
Well, my concern is, like you said, that side of the street would be up in the air and then the side, you know, across the street would not be.
Correct. Potentially.
Potentially. I'm just...
I know Second Road to the Moose River, there are houses elevated, and there is at least one house on National Avenue that's elevated. And again, I don't have the map, so I haven't done homework. Actually, I have a map. I don't, so I really kind of, I'm not quite sure where it is, is applicable and where it isn't, but that's just my comment. So, we are going to have a public hearing in a minute. Yes, ma'am?
Can you explain four point one point six to me, the retaining wall?
Sure. So, once a house is elevated, there's generally a large, a large foundation wall or even a series of brick piers that create that elevation of the house.
So, that's underground?
No.
Above ground.
Above ground. So, it can often, it can be between two and a half and five feet of wall, additional new wall below the house, underneath the house, but above grade, above the ground. And so, because that is a drastic or relatively significant, let's just say, change in the visual appearance of any one of the houses that does this, one way to minimize the visual impact is to make sure that they're, to require either landscaping, grading, and/or terraced retaining walls.
So, this is, I'm not an architect, I'm not a developer, whatever, but I just want to have a clear understanding myself. When I think of retaining wall, I'm thinking of a wall put up that's gonna, I just say, put a retaining wall around my home, so that's gonna divert that water someplace else. In this case, this is not what you're speaking of.
So, we're thinking more in terms of short walls that are usually like garden walls, and then the soil behind that may be close to the top of that wall, and then that reduces the visual effect of the house that would be behind it.
Barbara, an example of that, I'm trying to think, is on the corner of Broad and George Street, like you're going to the Triumph Palace, you know, they've removed the brick from that retaining wall and they're putting it back on. That is a retaining wall that they have built that house up? And I think that's what, would you agree that that's what...
Sure, yes, that would, that would count as that. We're imagining probably something much shorter. And some, there was a design for a house, it's not yet been constructed in the historic district, that used that technique to minimize the visual effect of being elevated higher than the surrounding homes, so...
So, in some areas of New Bern, we're trying to encourage residents to be resilient and over zealously elevate for future possible changes in climate conditions, i.e. and in other areas, we're more concerned with the aesthetic in certain historic areas than we are about resiliency. I'm just trying to blend these things in.
No, I think it's, in the historic district, it's both. So, the elevation of the homes will make them more resilient to future floods. And then the additional, the second, the second one of these two helps them to blend into the neighborhood, the historic neighborhood better, so...
Okay. Well, does the board have any more questions? Because I'm getting more into my comment stage and I need to have a public hearing first. We're gonna have a public hearing, you can come up in just a second. Is the board ready to have a public hearing?
Sure.
We're gonna open a public hearing. Anybody from the public that'd like to come up, ask questions, make comments, statements, you're welcome to do it at this time concerning this item.
What is the minimum height requirement?
That's a very good question. Where are you, I think where you're...
I live on, I live on North Craven Street.
Okay.
And if we raise our house, we'll be the only ones on the block with a raised house and that, and I, and how far, how far should we raise it if we so decide to do that?
Where are you on?
North Craven Street, the one thousand block.
I remember you came years ago and talked. And again, back to that, in that particular area, you've got that velocity issue, right? And then you got A and X and X five hundred.
That's...
And then you have, what I don't even know about is some of those areas, you've got the velocity map coming in, that's probably gonna impact her.
Uh, I don't...
Which brings her to fourteen feet.
Right, so I don't think the velocity issue happens along North Craven, but that's off my memory. The height, oops, here we go again. The required height is based on the flood ordinance and the, based on the flood ordinance, and the flood ordinance requires two feet above the base flood elevation. So, the base flood elevation is that elevation on the FEMA map.
Mr. Davis, want some of that fourteen feet though, in those areas, velocity?
Some can be as high as fourteen feet, yes.
Fourteen feet. So, that'd be sixteen feet in that case, is that right?
In rare cases, yes, sir.
But, but, that's rare cases, and North Craven, I don't believe, has that. Mostly it's nine feet, and so it's nine feet and plus two is eleven. And this is not above ground, this is eleven feet above sea level. All of these numbers are above sea level, so most of the ground is five and a half, six feet in some of the areas we're talking about, maybe four feet at the lowest, so...
Four feet at the lowest?
Lowest. So, the ground level being four feet at the lowest.
Let me ask you this, in that area, if you were in that mapped area where the velocity is to fourteen feet and you were nine feet under the house and you were one foot away from having enough room to have a car parked underneath there, but you couldn't because of this, could an individual get a variance from the Board of Adjustments or somewhere to get a little bit of a bump so that they could have a house with that beach design where some homes are doing that?
So, in the historic, if you're just referring to the historic districts, the answer is no, except potentially for the one new section that is north of Queen Street, where it's under construction now. That's the only area where a parking, parking or a garage space is allowed off the, or attached to the building, so...
Okay, we're still in the public hearing phase. If anybody'd like to come forward, ask any questions about this item? Yes, sir. Come up and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Charles Skinner. We have a house twelve oh three National Avenue. My question doesn't relate directly to this, I don't see a problem with this, but my question does relate to the Maola property and that property. And one of the...
It doesn't pertain to this public hearing, we can't discuss.
Okay, so I can't discuss that?
Now, if an Alderman...
Is it not, it's, because it's not in the, it's not in the historic district?
Well, that was my question, so I guess I go see you on that, or...
I can tell you the Maola plant is, on both sides of North Craven is not in the historic district.
That was my concern and that was my question. So, I don't know where to bring that up. So, if y'all can tell me where I can take that up with who I take that up with...
Sir, is it a zoning issue? I'm the Alderman for that ward, so is it a zoning issue?
Well, my concern is specifically, what, are you gonna go down in that area and throw in beach-style houses?
Again, it's, that would be, that would be an issue because it's...
Right.
...private property and they would come along as long as it meets the zoning requirements.
Right.
And I guess our attorney can speak to that. That's who he would speak to is...
Yes, ma'am, but you might want to just go to Development Services.
Okay, that's where I was asking.
Yes, sir. Jeff Ruggeri, the staff there can answer your questions, show you the plans for that area generally. But at the end of the day, it's private property and whatever that developer wants to do as long as it complies.
So, the city has no control over what happens on that property?
Just by zoning, that's it.
By zoning, they do.
Yes, sir, it's residential currently.
Okay, so who, who would I go see on that?
Jeff Ruggeri is here tonight. Jeff is, Jeff's right back there, that gentleman back there raising his hand.
Right there.
Your map, if I can carry it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else want to come up and ask questions, make comments about this item?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion second, all favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Alderman?
I have a question. With these guidelines, the individuals that are, that are in this area, are they grandfathered into what the stipulations were prior to?
Yes, they, they would only adhere to this if their house was damaged more than fifty percent, they had to rebuild new, or they're building a new, yes, everybody doesn't have to go in and renovate their houses. So, this is just, I guess, any new infill, construction?
Or if the house is sold, transfer of title, but then, because you know how when you have like with the zoning, if it's zoned one way with that property only, like if they sell it, they do have to get it up to code?
Correct. Well, this, this wouldn't be up to code, it would only be up to code if the house was fifty percent or more damaged and they would have to totally rebuild the house, then it's basically starting from new. And you'd have to adhere, you know, we had, think about the historic district, some of those peoples, that the house is just totally flooded.
Right.
So, they raise them, they would have to adhere to that rule.
It would also comply to someone, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would also comply to someone that buys a property and remodels it where it's greater than fifty percent of the value, then it would have to come into this code, correct?
That's, that's when it's required. This, these also apply when someone just desires to elevate whether they are required to or not.
Okay.
Again, just in the historic districts.
And riverside is wonky, you know, in that sense, so...
So, for the four point one six where it says minimize the visual impact, so if I had the tall foundation walls, this resolution is basically insisting that if I have that, I need to make sure that it doesn't look like a retaining wall?
And they want you to landscape around it to minimize the visual impact of just seeing big walls.
Big block walls.
Big block walls. They want you to put some shrubs or something so you can't tell that it's this, this deep it kind of minimizes.
So, referencing the property that you were giving to Alderman Best, that one on the corner that I did see? What is that in regards to this?
Well, they, they had a, they had a block, that was a retaining wall. Now, I don't believe that would not have to be shrubbed, correct? Because it's the outer retaining wall? We're talking about the foundation of the house retaining wall.
Okay, okay.
Is that correct, Matt?
Well, if I could, if I could help, what they're suggesting is, if you imagine an eight-foot foundation wall, what they're suggesting is you might use vegetation to minimize the impact, or you may start terracing your land up toward the house.
Oh, got you.
And create little two- and three-foot terraces to minimize that big eight-foot wall.
Got you, I got you. I'm just trying to make it look better.
Scott, they said you couldn't use it to park a car under it, but can they completely enclose it under it?
Well, you've got the building code and the flood code with respect to how that, how that space is gonna take the water and get rid of the water. So, that's gonna be more of a building code issue than a HPC guideline issue.
Okay.
I guess the houses that, the beach-style houses that have been bought, the cars are parking, but it's totally really open, it's got some wood slats, but the water can move in and out, so they don't...
Yes, ma'am.
...consider that a permanent type structure.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
How, my concern right now is how much does this really burden or impact our citizens? I guess that's the one thing, you know, we want to protect them, we want to protect property, but is this burdensome? That's, that's my laundry right now. How burdensome is this to our citizens?
Mr. Ruggeri, would you come up now, just want to ask you a couple of questions about this, particularly on Wolf Hills Drive, there are an anomaly of what I consider different heights over there, and, you know, I've physically been in some of the homes, and at the time when they were elevated, obviously the freeboard maybe was different, but some of them are way up there or they appear because the elevation's probably only three feet, four feet.
Sure.
Which makes it look much higher. So, what is your take on, I do know, having looked at those maps, that there are some areas riverside that are in that velocity mapping area. Now, more of it is downtown, condos and all we're hauling in, that's in that fourteen-foot area.
The velocity zone really doesn't cover many structures. I think it's really only three or four in this, okay. The velocity zone doesn't really impact many structures in the city. Most of, Union Point Park is in the velocity zone. The hotel has been raised up out of it. I really only think it's three or four houses that are impacted by the velocity zone, but it does have its own construction standards associated with it. And again, we can, I don't have those off the top of my head, but we can actually, we can easily provide you the maps on those.
Well, from a trending standpoint of where we are today, where we've been, and where we're gonna go with resiliency as a nation, as a state, do you feel comfortable with this two-foot deal for now? Are we gonna five years from now be mandated by FEMA to bump it up? Well, it'll self-bump itself if FEMA changes.
Sure.
Base flood.
Yeah, so, okay, go ahead.
Is there any kind of elastic opportunity here to blend this stuff in, the way this is being codified, or are you comfortable with what's being presented and gonna be voted on tonight?
Sure, well, two feet above freeboard is not, is not common, okay? So, New Bern made that two-foot decision years before I even got here, and I've been here nine years now. So, doing that back then was, was, was very far-sided on behalf of that board back then to do so. So, two feet is usually one foot, so two feet is the extra. Going three, I haven't even heard of, but it's obviously, two is better than, three is better than two when it comes to flooding. But again, when we saw Florence, a lot of the structures that were elevated two foot above freeboard really didn't perceive really catastrophic damage. All their damage, that two feet really helped, because all that damage was underneath the home. So, a lot of AC units, ductwork, all those types of things. So, the two feet worked during Florence, and it really did minimize a lot of the impact of the, of the flooding. And that's easy, that's easy to see.
What does it work, is the one inch per square foot, that's what doesn't work. I need to be about two inches, but that's, that's been proven, but that's a different thing.
Sure.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure on this item?
Mayor, I just have one question. I noticed that it says traditional materials, but it also mentions stucco. Is stucco allowed for foundation wall in historic district? That's not really a traditional material.
Sure it is. Stucco, it is.
Yeah, so, oh, you're talking about the first four, the first four guidelines.
Four, one, three.
Yes, so, just to be clear, those are already established. It's only these two that we're adding, we're not changing the other four.
Stucco's always been there, look at, again, the REM house that's on the corner across the street from the house I referenced.
Yeah, but the reason I'm asking that is, so, there's new material, man-made material that looks like wood that we don't allow in the historic district, correct?
We don't allow it on historic structures.
So, stucco today is not the stucco that was made in the time when these houses would have been constructed, so...
Yeah, we generally don't split hairs like that.
On stucco, but we do on wood.
Well, you, the, the wood that I, that I understood you to mean was not actually wood, but rather plastic or concrete.
Are you talking about hardy board?
Yeah.
Hardy board?
Hardy plank, hardy board, that's concrete.
So, you require wood because it's still available?
Yes.
Stucco is okay because the stucco that was used years ago is not the same stucco today?
Right, and in many cases, you can't get some of the old materials that were available back then. And in some cases, you don't want to use materials like asbestos.
Right.
Does the board want to take any action on this item?
Let me yield over to your historic district. I have one other question for you, Matt. Is there anybody, what pushed you to make these changes? Do you have a string of houses or applicants ready to do this, and you needed to appropriately change it?
So we've already had a string of houses elevate recently, and we had not had any specific guidelines for us at the beginning, especially soon after Florence. The HPC required the property owners to contact the State Historic Preservation Office for guidance and to provide a letter. And in some cases, that then was used to help guide the HPC to make a decision.
We had nothing in writing to say how many feet.
Correct, correct.
So is this in accordance with the, with shipper, with the State Historic Preservation Office? So the two feet, is that where you got, I mean, you know, why not four feet? Why not three feet? Where did you get that two feet?
Well, the two feet comes from the freeboard as a guidance.
So you're eliminating a person's elevation to the freeboard?
Outside of the flood zone.
Right.
Outside of the flood zone.
So parts of the historic district are in the flood zone, and parts are outside the flood zone.
So what does somebody in the flood zone, what level do they get to rise to?
So that was the, they go to the BFE plus two, which is the freeboard. And so the first one of these is to say, but we don't want, or we will not allow you to go higher than that in the historic district, because then you end up with a beach house situation, right? So that's why this is now being set in the guidelines.
Do you know whether or not this in any way would negatively affect our community rating that we worked so hard to get approval for a year or so back?
He said no.
Let me ask you a question. If I live in the historic district, but I'm not in the flood zone, and God forbid my house was to burn down and I have to build it back, does that mean I have to go two foot higher than what it was originally?
If you want, but not higher. If you want, you can put it back exactly as it was, but you cannot go higher than two feet if you want to for some reason.
So it's a maximum of two feet?
Right.
Okay.
I think it's just been a little confusing.
It is.
And I understand that, and I know we're trying to do our best to protect the overall feeling, the ebb and flow of our district, and I think all of us should serve on the HPC for one go-round, because you really learn a lot, and that's not kind of wet my feet in serving the city. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion that we adopt the amendment to Article 21, New Bern Historic District of the City Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there further discussion? Seeing on this side, roll call, starting with Alderman Beagle.
Alderman Beagle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes, I think.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, much appears. Item seven.
Mayor, item seven is to conduct a public hearing and to consider adopting three separate ordinances that will, one, amend Section 15-24, Part II of the Planning and Zoning Code to conform with North Carolina General Statute 160D, as well as eliminate two ETJ jurisdiction seats. Second item will be to discontinue the Appearance Commission, and the third item to clarify appointees' terms to the Historic Preservation Commission for their terms to expire on June 30th. Memo from the city attorney attached needs here to answer any questions.
Do these have to be handled individually?
No, ma'am. Good question, though. Mayor, members of the board, I'm going to try to help you tackle these three separate issues. These are all amendments to the land use ordinance, which requires a public hearing. Two things are happening with these proposals. Primarily, they are proposed to what I hope to be the final step of a 12-year project to get all of our boards and commissions, I say cleaned up, but better organized so that all of our terms that those members serve end on June 30th of each year to help the clerk and you as board members appoint successors to those seats. Primary reason. One of those boards is the P and Z, Planning and Zoning Board, and while we are in there doing some surgery, this is a good moment to make some other minor revisions to that section to comply with Chapter 160D. That is our brand-new land use chapter in our general statutes. Over the next six, eight, 10 months, on a monthly basis, you'll see us bringing new revisions to the land use ordinance to you necessitated by that new statute. So primarily, we are dealing with organizing our boards and commissions, starting with P and Z. Historically, P and Z has had 10 members, three of which are representative of the ETJ, the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Some of you may recall, you've been around long enough, the Rocky Run Corridor was the city's first ETJ back in the early to mid-'90s. The statute requires that when you extend your regulatory jurisdiction, ETJ is the area outside of the city where our land use ordinances apply. Cities oftentimes exercise that jurisdiction outside of its city to create more consistency visually as folks come into the city, so that that corridor is more consistent with the city than not. The thinking back in the '90s was that New Bern was going to grow toward River Bend, and it made sense to extend the ETJ out Highway 17 South to the Rocky Run area to bring that regulatory area into the city. When you do that, the statute requires that one member from that community, who is not a resident of the city, serve on the Planning and Zoning Board. A number of years later, the city extended its ETJ south down Highway 70 for a good ways to, I think on the theory at the time, to help regulate and control outdoor advertising and the signage. My best guess at that time is staff decided that since the Rocky Run area had a representative on the P and Z board, that the Highway 70 corridor should have one as well. So another seat was added to P and Z. And then finally, the Sandy Point area was brought into the extraterritorial jurisdiction, and a third seat was added. So in those moments, I'm sure it made good sense. But what's happened since then, we now have a city-based population of approximately 30,000 citizens, and we have an ETJ population of about 530 citizens. And the composition of our Planning and Zoning Board is 30 percent non-residents who live in the ETJ, when that population is actually 1.8 percent of the total population. So the theory is to bring that representation more into keeping with the percentage of the population. And I'll do the math for you, by having one member that we are required to have because of the ETJ, there will still be a 12 and 1/2 percent representation on that board. Let me say this too, and I went to P and Z board to talk through this. This recommendation has nothing to do with the quality of service of those citizens whatsoever. In fact, the two members whose seats would expire if the board adopts this, their terms actually expired June of last year. They have been serving until their successors are appointed or until their seats are terminated. So that's the first big issue for you to tackle, reducing the ETJ seats from three down to one, and then incorporating the Chapter 160D amendments. Second thing you're going to be addressing tonight is whether or not you would like to retain the Appearance Commission. Appearance Commission was created in the mid-'80s, I want to say, to do two things, help assist in beautifying the city, and then to provide a resource to the Board of Aldermen with respect to the regulation of trees. Back in the '80s, the city did not have the resources to deal with litter and beautification, nor did have the resources to address public right-of-reed trees or the maintenance and control of those trees. Since then, this board and prior boards have added considerable resources with respect to beautification, litter control, nuisance abatement. In fact, the city has an arborist now on staff full-time. So what has happened, through no fault of the Appearance Commission, the city has added those resources and staffing to address those concerns, leaving the Appearance Commission with little to do. Therefore, the thinking is that the staff time and effort that it takes to govern and address that board would be better spent on other things within the city. The third change with respect to the HPC, that's the Historic Preservation Commission, they are the last board out of a dozen that, whose terms expire in mid-May of each year. When a governing board creates a public body and staffs that public body, those terms commence on the day that board is born. Typically, and I think this is a rule for all of our boards, all of our seats are on staggered terms. That means if you have a nine-member board, three seats turn over every year. The theory is to maintain a core body within that commission who understands the rules of engagement and what's going on, so that we retain institutional knowledge. If every seat turned over every term, everyone's a beginner day one, that's not efficient or good for the city. What has happened over the decades, and we came close to resolving this 10 years ago, over the decades, what would happen is members might resign or move away, and a new person is appointed to serve in that seat. But for administrative reasons, that person was treated as if they were getting a brand-new three-year term, when in fact, their seat was on a staggered term that was going to terminate most likely sooner than three years. The other thing that would happen is members would be appointed after the expiration of a term, and the staff folks keeping score would start that three-year term, maybe in September, when that person was appointed, when in fact, the seat term began July 1st. So extrapolate that times a dozen boards, times 30 or 40 years, and what happens is we have boards and commissions that are no longer staggered, it's random hell or skelter. That has been cleaned up dramatically, going back about 10 years. The last little cleanup we have is on the HPC to get that board on a June 30th term. So all of those staggered seats end on June 30th. And of course, because those terms were due to expire mid-May, this change is not negatively impacting anyone who is serving. They will simply serve six weeks longer through the end of June. Those are the three things we'll be tackling at these public hearings.
The Appearance Commission, is that the one where yearly they would come around and we would give the awards for, you know, they vote, who voted on, who had the nice, so does that go away as well?
That does not go away. Parks and Recreation would still continue to do that.
Okay.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for you. On ETJ, I know why we were doing ETJ years ago, but in that James City Corridor, by general statutes, we can't annex.
Yes, sir.
So what's the benefit of even having an ETJ there?
The thinking at that time was that that corridor was not developing with the aesthetic that the city might like, given the fact that the Old Airport Road Corridor was growing so greatly up to Taberna, and then out past Evans Mill and Carolina Colors. A lot of folks believe that downtown proper out to Carolina Colors is all New Bern, and that highway corridor specifically, because they don't have any sign regulation, was looking and feeling much different than the city of New Bern proper. So the thinking at the time was that with those city rules, the city would then apply its land use rules, and over the decades, those signs would come down, get into conformance, and that area would look more like New Bern.
So they're taking signs down over there just as hard as they can now?
Yes, sir.
Will they be allowed to put them back up?
Most likely not.
Really?
Most likely not. It depends. It depends on the facts, right. And as you point out too, we have a local bill that's 30 or 40 years old that provides that New Bern cannot forcibly annex anyone, any properties south of the Trent River. So any annexation, any growth we have is through voluntary annexations.
Yeah, I know that, I was talking to the contractor that was removing a sign, and he left it on the property, which he has many of them. And I said, yeah, we told him it was property we had control over, so we asked him if he could move it. And basically, he said he was leaving it right there because they were going to put it right back up.
Yes, sir. Oftentimes, you can. If it's a DOT issue, typically, you've got 180 days to put it back up if you legally can. It's no different than a non-conforming use. If you abandon your old sign, after six months, you lose your right to reinstall it.
So we can enforce the 180-day sign, if that sign is down for more than 180 days, we can enforce that he not put it back up, or we can?
If he chooses not to put it back up when he legally can. If there's construction and DOT reasons why it cannot be reinstalled, then that would be out of his control, or the owner's control.
Okay, well, that's what they'll say then, so that's what's happening.
Yeah, I would expect so.
I just don't understand, I mean, we have no control over the signs over there now. The county doesn't have a sign ordinance, do they? Although I think they finally did adopt something that they can't put any more up or something like that. I'm not sure.
I don't know. In that corridor, the city of New Bern regulates all the land use issues and signage. So what signs are there are complying, and if they don't comply, they're grandfathered.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, roughly, public hearing, anybody from the public would like to come up and ask questions, make comments, statements about the site? Free to do it at this time.
Mayor, Alderman, good evening. My name is Travis Oakley. I'm one of the members on the Planning and Zoning Board. We actually looked at this our last meeting. We got very detailed on discussing these three items. This is a rare opportunity right now for the city of New Bern to actually clean up, as the city attorney alluded to, to clean up a lot of these boards and clean up a lot of low-hanging fruit that has been out there that just, at this point, does not make sense. The Appearance Committee, Parks and Rec, has done leaps and bounds. They actually control all that now. So there's really no need for an Appearance Board. As far as the representatives for the ETJ, it's simple math, is what it boils down to. The city attorney, he basically alluded to that, is you want to have proper representation, but at the same time, it doesn't make any sense for the ETJ to have over-representation sitting on the Planning and Zoning Board. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. Those are some of the things that we talked about. And then as far as, you know, getting the boards back on a regular cycle, that makes sense, because otherwise, he just gave you what happens where everybody starts at ground zero, and then you never have regulatory control. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward?
James Woods, 1903 Country Club wrote, just my question is to Scott, I guess, or understanding of EPJ. So Scott, if I'm So Scott, if I stay in the Rocky Run area, and/or Sandy Point, either one of the three areas, and you take away two, how would I be represented then about that EPJ?
You would, well, you'd just reach out to the Planning and Zoning Board directly. It's not that, it's not like wards where...
Right, right.
You have to reach out to your person. You would reach out to staff and the entire Planning and Zoning Board and address that board with whatever concerns you might have.
Scott, I think it would be important to say that the county appoint, we don't even appoint those people, the county appoints those people.
But by those people being on the EPJ, I mean, on the Planning and Zoning Board, they are privy to what's going on even in that corridor, so they know what's going on. If someone's not from that area on the board, then they don't have an idea of what's going on.
No, sir, and I think the same is true in pockets all over the city. Members of the Planning and Zoning Board are not appointed because of where they live. They're generally appointed for their knowledge and interest in land use regulation, which is much more important than where you might live.
Okay, I got that part, but it's what, I guess I'm still not understanding the fact that the way you explained it was that Rocky Run, Sandy Point, and Highway 70 was put on the board for, because we couldn't annex that property, so that they would have a voice to what was going on. But now you're telling me that's not why people were put on the Planning and Zoning Board?
I think that was the logic at the time. By law, there had to be one person. By law, there must be one non-city resident if there's an ETJ. There's no rule beyond that, other than it must be proportionate, right?
Right.
So at a minimum, you have to have one.
Right, I got that.
But if the ETJ population is half of the city, then they would have half the seats for the P&amp;Z.
Correct, okay, I got that.
That's the only law that applies.
Okay. I was just curious about representation, if, you know, if you're going towards, especially if you're going towards River Bend or Rocky Run...
Sure.
And in the Highway 70 area.
Sure.
I understand Sandy Point, I got that, but it seems to me like somebody needs to be on that Planning and Zoning Board that can kind of know what's going on for the community, those two communities or three communities.
Yes, sir. I agree, and you make a good point that we might get staff's help when the time comes for the next appointment. It might be nice for you to see the three ETJ zones by population, because I suspect that Rocky Run area might have a greater population than the other two corridors, and that might, that might be a wise thing to think about.
But again, it would not be our appointment.
It's the county.
It would be the county's appointment, and they would have to determine.
They generally, they typically reach out to the city for a recommendation, but you're exactly right. At the end of the day, it's the county who would decide.
And the county, does the county usually appoint people that live within the city limits, or live within...
No, ma'am.
So it's never someone who lives in the city limit?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No, ma'am.
Anybody else would like to come forward at this time?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. I'm in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. Motion carries.
Scott, can we do all of these together?
If it's unanimous, you can, yes, sir.
Yep.
I'll give it a shot.
Yep.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amending Section 1524 of Part II of the P&amp;Z Board of Land Use Ordinance, also ordinance amending Part IV Appearance Commission of Article III of Appendix A of the Land Use Ordinance, and ordinance amending Section 15419 Historic Preservation Commission of Article 21 of Appendix A of the Land Use Ordinance.
Second.
Motion and second, is there further discussion?
Just a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So when we approve this tonight, that means that there will be, no longer be a Appearance Commission, because the city now has an arborist aboard, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Among other resources, but yes, ma'am.
Seeing that for discussions, have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Harris?
Yes.
Motion carries, I'm number eight.
Mayor, I have made this presentation by the New Bern Area Metropolitan Planning Organization regarding an update for the bike and pedestrian plan. Kim Maxi, the MPO Administrator, is here to provide the presentation.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about updating your bicycle and pedestrian plan. As you know, the MPO focuses on multimodal transportation planning, which includes the 3C planning process, continuing, cooperative, and comprehensive. So when we heard about discussions that you wanted to update your bicycle and pedestrian plan, we wanted to get involved. When the existing city of New Bern Bike-Ped Plan was created in 2009, the MPO did not exist at that time. City land use ordinances had not been updated as they are now, and while the plan was robust, it was somewhat fiscally constrained, didn't provide any language for prioritization or project implementation or funding. So since then, Mayor Outlaw and members of the board have expressed their support for better bicycle and pedestrian facilities to help make New Bern a more walkable and bikeable city. The city has updated their land use ordinances and now requires new developments that front existing properties to put in sidewalks, and for new residential developments to have sidewalks within their communities as well. So while those efforts are very encouraging, they've led to some infrastructure gaps and some fractures in connectivity, as I'm sure most of you are aware. So this update will work to identify and close those gaps. It'll work to provide adequate connectivity, it'll focus on safety for bicycle and pedestrian movements, but I think most importantly, it'll help establish a primary network, a secondary and a tertiary network that we can, you know, build off of from there. So we did something like this in 2019 for two of our other member agencies, River Bend and Bridgeton. Trent Woods already has a pretty established bicycle and pedestrian plan, and they have implemented a number of their projects within that plan. So we, the MPO, allocated $50,000 for our next fiscal year budget to update your plan. This was approved unanimously by both of our MPO boards in January. We feel this is an important use of our funds for the continuing cooperative planning efforts that we follow in supporting bicyclists and pedestrians, not only for New Bern residents, but for our visitors, in connecting the corridors within New Bern, as well as connecting member agencies within the MPO. So that would be New Bern to River Bend to Trent Woods, hopefully someday to Bridgeton. And this, having these plans in place will help provide a methodology for the MPO boards when we work towards implementing funding for some of the projects that you want to do. So we want to keep in mind that the city of New Bern and Craven County, which are both within the MPO, are part of the East Coast Greenway, and our waterways are also part of the Mountains to Sea Trail. So these are both two important initiatives that this effort helps to support as well. As these efforts continue, we will host at least one public involvement session. The MPO will provide regular updates on our website and our social media platforms, and will revisit the board early in the year with a draft plan for your review and comment as well. We anticipate the plan to take eight to nine months, and will start next month at the beginning of the fiscal year 2022, and hope to have a final plan at the end of March 2022. So one item of clarification I want to make sure everybody understands is that this is just a plan update. So we can support funding this plan for the city of New Bern, but when it comes to implementing any projects within the plan, it will require, you know, the city being vested. It requires a 20% match from the city for any bicycle and pedestrian plan or project that you want to implement. So much as you provided funding for the First Street improvements that provided bicycle and pedestrian facilities, it would be the same sort of thing for any bike-ped project that you want to do. And that's about all I have. I can answer any questions?
Let me ask you a couple questions.
Yeah.
While everybody's doing all these studies, why don't they do just a greater New Bern plan? You know, I mean, you talk about connectivity between River Bend, James City, Bridgeton, Trent Woods. I'm not privy, or I'm not familiar with their plans, or their plans are going to be very similar to ours?
Well, they're already in existence, so they're specific for their community. This one will be specific for New Bern, but we can do outreach. One of the things that was mentioned in the River Bend plan was the connection along MLK to New Bern and retail, you know, the retail corridor that MLK is. So we can incorporate those same things in this plan. This is a comprehensive plan for the area, but it's specific for the community of New Bern. Does that make sense?
If we do, I guess you could do it without our permission, I mean, it's your MPO funds, I assume.
Correct.
Would this make availability of grants more possible for the city?
Yes.
And like you say, it'd be a 20% match if we, where we get them?
So, correct. Having any sort of a project in a comprehensive plan will be supported more heavily by the state for funding of any sort.
So in our 2009 plan, I don't remember if there was any match or not with that, with the old plan, in other words, we're just going to kind of trash the old plan, right? If we do this one, or if you do it?
That's really up to the city.
We had one that was being implemented, because...
Well, that was the one that was in 2009, and we were trying to do pieces of it.
Well, this is all we got.
But there was never implementation money, but I think the reason we didn't have grants is because we didn't have an MPO. We had the RPO, and they didn't have funding towards that. I guess the MPO now has resources.
So was this going to happen anyway? Because I think Alderman Odom, you were the one that were suggesting updating the 2009 plan, and then the next thing I know, we're doing this, which is fine, which might help us get more grant funding, I don't know.
Essentially, this is updating your 2009 plan.
So would you assume the 2009 plan was a similar 20% match at that time? Because I remember that plan was like millions of dollars, and when, with all the things going on during that time period, the last thing on my mind was spending millions of dollars, even though we'd all like to see it done.
Kim, can you clarify what the 20% match is? That's for future projects, not for this?
Yes, the 20% doesn't have anything to do with creating this plan. That's a, the $50,000 is what we have allocated to update the plan as a whole. So when you find a project that you, you know, say you want to install sidewalks or some sort of a, you know, greenway along MLK Boulevard, and you're really vested in that, then you would come to the MPO and say, all right, in your next round of prioritization, which is how we score projects to get them funded, you would say, this is one that we want to implement, we'll give you the 20% match for whatever the cost is of that specific project. So it's project-specific for 20%. If you want to have five projects that you implement, it's going to be 20% for each of those five projects. Is, does that, is that clear? Sorry.
Is your funding all state, or do you get federal match? Does the state get a match?
Our funding comes from the state, which is funneled from the federal government.
I was wondering about your, your match from the federal government. Does the state pay the whole 80% or does federal?
Yes, the state pays the 80%.
But the state gets the money from the federal government.
Right, 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 right.
And there are federal grant opportunities available as well, you know, so those are updated every year. It used to be the build, and now it's something else, so.
Right. With all these new earmarks and everything that are coming down the pipe, we're hearing all about infrastructure and whatever, transportation is probably high on the list. Is there, do you see additional funds? Do you see other things? Because now is our opportunity. I mean, we have so many needs, and just like that plan, you know, I remember when I came in on the board in 2009, they had just done the plan, but we never, it sat on a shelf. I don't want this plan to sit on a shelf.
And really, that's up to the city. I mean, we are the, as the MPO, we're a transportation planning organization, that's what we do. So we can provide this service for the city. What you do with the plan is completely up to you.
But do you assist? I guess the biggest question is, aren't you a resource to assist us in finding the funds?
Absolutely.
And finding the grants?
Yes.
To lessen the cost? You know, if something's going to cost a million dollars, you know, we'll only have to pay 20%, but you can find the 80% portion for us?
That's correct, yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, we are here to assist you in finding alternative ways to help fund projects that you want to complete across the moat. So that's multimodal, not just bike and ped.
Right.
But any, any project that you want to do. But as far as, there are always grant opportunities, there will always be funding for transportation. We still don't quite understand how the American Jobs Plan and some other plans are going to impact the funding for infrastructure. We know it's a big push right now, but we don't have specific information on how we are going to be able to utilize that yet. And as we all know, the DOT's had some budget concerns over the past year that we're overcoming, so that also leaves some things hanging at this moment.
Well, I'm going to be very bold, excuse me, I just want to say, I want to be very bold for one minute and just say that sidewalks and all this and bike are really good, but we need transportation. We can't get people to work, we can't get them to healthcare, we can't get them to a lot of things. And my hope, when we came into the MPO, I was told, was that we would be able to start looking at transportation and funding it, and I have not seen...
And that's transit, you mean?
Not a iota, I mean, of that happening. We've got carts, but carts does not really help us unless there's going to be more money put into it. And I just, you know, while you're here, I would just like to voice my strong support that we need to really focus, I would like to see MPO really focus on that, because that is a major need of our citizens. You know, housing, transportation, these are the things that we committed ourselves to when we came into office, and I just think it's really important that we stay focused on those needs.
It is, and I think Alderman Odom sits on our MPO Advisory Board, or Policy Board, and I think he can attest to the fact that the transit issues are something that is a regular dialogue within the MPO and within the boards. We are a little bit tied because Craven County is in charge of carts. So while we provide certain funds for carts, and they receive funds now because it's an urbanized area, we don't have the freedoms to just go in and say, well, we need to expand your hours, and you need to pay your drivers more money, or you need to expand your routes. We don't have that flexibility to do that. We support them, and I will say that if you bear with it, there are some big changes that were announced during our meetings last month from carts that are very, very encouraging for, for what transit will mean within our communities, so.
Alderman Odom, do you have something?
Yeah, Kim, could you just let the board know the $50,000 number is a big number, considering that it's an update to a plan and not a new plan from scratch? Could you just share with them the plans that were done in River Bend and some other areas, how that equates as far as the magnitude of the cost?
Yes, so, you know, our budget, we're under $250,000 for our budget annually, so $50,000 in this particular capacity is quite a bit of money. We did an expedited plan for River Bend and Bridgeton, and if memory serves, I believe the combined amount for both of those, because it didn't take nine months, it just, we did a very expedited plan, but I believe for both of those, it was 20,000 combined, so 10 apiece. So this is significantly more, and is going to take three times as long to complete, so.
Alderman Best?
Yeah. I was, as well as Alderman, Harris, was, I'm under the same impression, I thought we already had a bicycle pedestrian plan. So how did the First Street development there incorporate that bicycle plan? Was that through the state?
Yes.
That was through us, through the MPO.
That was through you as well? Okay, all right.
Yeah, any, any transportation improvement that you see within the MPO boundary, which consists of the city of New Bern, portions of Craven County, Bridgeton, Trent Woods, and River Bend, any updates that you see would, has to be facilitated through the MPO. So the First Street project was one that we worked on, the improvements to the Highway 70 corridor, the improvements to NC 43, the improvements that are coming for Highway 17, all of those have come through the MPO.
So the First Street project, would the city put a 20% match?
Actually, the city provided a larger than 20% match, which really helped bolster that project, scoring-wise, and it got done a lot faster that way.
If some came with board at this time, something very important along these lines, Matt Fly with, he's very involved in the bicycle business in New Bern, and Bill Sandler, if you gentlemen would like to come up and ask any questions, this is quite a bit about bicycle enthusiasts around New Bern, and I know you guys are concerned with safety and other issues, and...
and other issues, and if you, the question I have, they might wanna come up and expand on, guys, is, 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 would, how much involvement is the MPO, is whoever the consultant gonna have with coming and interviewing Mr. Sadler, Mr. Flight, others, to get public input about what we want? Because we might very well, or you might very well get a plan that we go back and say, "Well, we liked 2009 plan better." So, is there, what kinda input would we have? And, go ahead, Mr. Sadler.
My name is Bill Sadler, and I've worn many hats. I did not live in the city of New Bern, but I was part of the group who put together the '09 plan. And the reason for that is I was appointed by the New Bern Outdoor Adventure Club to be the representative on the plan. The good thing about it is, I look around the room tonight, and I look at the first page of the plan, and I see some familiar names, like City Magnus Head was Danny Meadows, I believe he's here tonight, Dana Outlaw, who back in those days did not sit in the mayor's chair, he was an Alderman, and Colleen Maloney Roberts, she was on the committee, like I say, Mac Flight and myself. During that time, we identified the opportunity to have bike paths, the need to have bike paths, and the cost. And when I look at a cost, back in '09, to go in front of a group and say, "Would you mind spending 13 million dollars over the next 20 years? It would only be, what, about $600,000 a year? No big deal, right?" Well, maybe not. And one of the things I will say, a lot of people have said it was kinda a waste of time, a waste of money putting together that plan, and it was not, because it did identify those three things. And one of the things I will say from a citizen's point of view, who's an avid cyclist, I really would like to see the plan that we have reviewed and updated, 'cause there are a lot of things like, since that plan was put together, I go to places like Durham and even some smaller towns like Havelock, and I see some simple things that's done that's not super expensive. And that's like just putting the bike Chevron on our street, make up a trail out of it, and what it does, it identifies where's a bike route, but it also identifies for motorists that this is a bike route, and they should be looking for them. That is something that can be done for a lot less money than the 13 million dollars that we were talking about early on here. So, one of the things I would like to say, it's probably my responsibility that the city of New Bern did not implement this plan, because I was told the night that it was voted on, and here's what was said, "What is it going to cost us to adopt this plan?" And the answer was, nothing, to adopt it. Now, if we want to implement it, it's gonna cost us a lot of money. Following that meeting, a city planner told me that if I wanted the plan implemented, what I had to do and needed to do was put together an advocacy group and stay right on the Alderman's and the mayor's butt until something happened. Well, I did not do that, and so I apologize to everybody for falling down on that. But tonight, if I was gonna put together a group, the first person I would put on that group would be Scotty's mother, Sherry, because I know that she can keep him straight. The second person that I would put on there would be Steve Bingle, and I'm damn sure he can't keep a Subaru straight, so maybe he shouldn't even be on there. No, I'm trying to make light of stuff. One of the things, though, seriously, I would like to see is, city of New Bern invest a little money into bicycle routes, safety, and make it more of a bike-friendly neighborhood. As many of you know, and you can see from my shirt, I've been involved now for 17 years in the Bike MS. And one of the things, I know that when you're looking at spending money, there's a lot of people in New Bern who, one, don't wanna see a bicycle, and, two, don't wanna be taxed, and their tax money's spent on bicycling. Well, I think that MS Ride proves one thing, and that is bicycle activity and events can bring money in the city of New Bern, and people spend money, and it's taxed, and the city of New Bern will reap some of those benefits. So, if any way that I can help the, is it MPO, Metropolitan Planning and Management Organization? Used to work with Alex Ricker on a few things. Actually, was mentioned the Mounts to the Sea Trail. For two years, I was head of the Friends of the Mountains to the Sea Trail, and was looking very forward to that trail coming through New Bern. There's been some moves to kinda move it away from it, but I still think that the North Carolina Parks and Rec, they really still want to keep it coming through Historic New Bern. At least that's one of the good things we've got going for us. So, without further ado, I'm gonna turn this over to Mac Flight.
Let me ask you one thing before you get going. You could mention staying with the old 2009.
I was saying, it needs to be updated, absolutely updated. I think what you will find in that plan was some areas where we felt like needed connecting. Definitely the Country Club area in downtown New Bern needs a connection, and I think that was kinda addressed here. And there was other places around New Bern, and sometimes you have theme trails, like a bicycle ride around Historic, you know, where you got the numbers on the houses and that kinda thing. So, there's a lot of things that was identified in there that is still applicable today. All that needs to be done is updated and modernized. Things that we didn't know about then, like the Chevrons on the roads all through Durham and other places, things that can be done to make people aware of the cycling in town and that kinda thing that doesn't cost a lot of money. So, like I say, update it, the issue be reviewed, and I'm sure they will, and take the best of it and improve on it, type of what I was trying to say.
So, I love all of that. My thought too is, I'm, I'm big on making sure that, you know, safety is there for the biking, bicycling. Do we have locations in the city where there, where you can store your bike and lock it up? Like, do we have those on the streets? Yeah, the bike racks?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think the city of New Bern that I'm aware of has any that they actually own. Now, Mr. Flight said in the back, his, well, his former bike shop, he sold it to his son cheaply, I think. Anyway, they have provided racks all around town, and if you see a rack around town, it was paid for by Flight's Bike Shop. Might be a couple of incidents where the business itself contributed a little bit towards the bike racks. Another thing that I noticed in Louisville, Kentucky, and also saw it in the old plan, is you can get RT bike racks. And sometimes you might go out, and I think in Louisville, they did one of these things, you build a bike rack, and we're going to judge it for its beauty. And ever who is selected, of course, it depends on how many you get and that kinda thing.
Right, you make it creative.
We'll get $10,000.
Oh, wow.
The people who don't win, they just contribute it to the city.
Are you familiar with that bicycle kiosk in, or repair kiosk in Seven Springs? Ever been there?
I have seen it.
Yeah, I mean, things like that, I mean, just say, we're a bike friendly, not biker.
Right, right. And for those that don't know, I've been known to ride a bicycle across the state of North Carolina, and we were in Seven Springs one time, and the kiosks are there with pumps and wrenches and stuff that you can work on your bike, and yet it is a very friendly town, that's true.
It's got little tables with the wrenches and tools where you can...
You know what I would love for you to do, 'cause I hear Steve complain about this all the time, I think we have our wonderful TV3 channel station, I'd love for you to do a program on safety for people who bike, because Steve always says, "The drivers today don't understand etiquette for people on bicycles." And I think more public information, more awareness of that, that would help, you know. Putting the bike lanes is one thing, but having drivers understand the safety and the signals and all of that, I think, is another. So, I would love to nominate you and volunteer you to get with Colleen and maybe do a little program that she can run on our TV3 or on our Facebook page and be helpful to our citizens.
At some point, I'd be more than glad to work with Colleen.
Yeah, I just think it's, it's important, because I think that's an issue and a problem that I hear many cyclists talk about.
Right.
My, my second comment wasn't for you, so if you want, you can, um, sit down, was more or less with the announcements, if they come out in regards to carts with the county, and they may not be conducive or exciting to us, I feel, 'cause we've been on this for almost four years.
We have.
We need to take some initiative, and maybe with the MPO, one representative, maybe two representatives or three representatives from this board in Craven County, and we really need to sit down and have a meeting, because I come from, you know, a city where I can get to, I would be able to get to Greenville, I can get to Havelock, I can get to Jacksonville, like the tri, what we call tri-city area, and there's no transportation, we barely have Uber, and like you said, people need to get to work. So, I feel like we really need to just sit down and say, "Hey, they're willing to assist us, you know, maybe there's, you know, grant money out there with all the infrastructure, but we need to figure it out in regards to making, you know, affordable and safe transportation, even if it's through carts." And if it, if they're not gonna expand, then we need to see as a city what we can do to better that situation, 'cause I know Alderman Bingo has been talking about it since I've been on the board, and it's frustrating for me in regards to that. And so, you know, they go hand in hand. If we're lacking in transportation, we really need to support updating this bike lane from 2009, so that it's conducive with, and it's modernized, like he said, so that, you know, people aren't driving cars and they, you know, they need to get to work there safe on the bike lanes, and you can see them where they're going. 'Cause like you said, in Durham, I do see the Chevrons or the little symbols of, of the bike, and it's important, and people need to respect people that ride a bike.
Kim, can I ask you another question?
You can ask questions, sir.
Will the board entertain any other brief public comments?
I allow Mr. Sadler, so if you'd like to make a comment, sir.
Let me, I think she has a question.
Let me ask Kim a question first.
Okay.
Please. Yeah, I too would like to see the bicycle pedestrian plan to, you know, evolve, because in your planning on the MPO board, has anyone come up with a suggestion or talked about maybe having a bike pedestrian trail plan for Craven Community College down Glen Burnie Road, so that kids can get back and forth to college riding their bikes?
Yes, that is something that I can tell you, we have funded the improvements to the Glen Burnie interchange, and that project stretches from Elizabeth Avenue to Greenbrier, I believe, which will include infrastructure for bicyclists and pedestrians. So, that's one piece of it. I realize there's the rest of Glen Burnie and some outlying connectors, and that'll be all part of what's included. They will, there will be a stakeholder involvement, so they'll, I anticipate the consulting firm will speak with, you know, bike shops, bike owners, bicycle groups, the Craven Community College, and other stakeholders within our area to make sure that it's, it'll be very comprehensive, I think, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir, do you wanna brief your, something?
Thank you. My name's Ken Perkins, I'm not a resident of the city, but I frequent the city's roads all the time. I was out there today, I'm an avid cyclist, and I'm all for consideration of plans and the expenditure of money for plans, and to the extent that those plans can, can realize the city funds to improve biking, I think it's great. But I would suggest that, that this board could take a very practical approach to some, some facts that are clear. There are five main ways into and out of this city, okay? There's a bridge over to Bridgestone, there's Glen Burnie Road, there's Martin Luther King, there's Trent Road, and there's Country Club Road. That's how you get into and out of this city, okay? People ride bikes on those roads, and, and you don't need, you should have, but you don't need a big plan to tell you that, you know that already. So, the focus on safety, those are heavily trafficked roads that cyclists are on all the time. Now, let's look at all of them, okay? You're not gonna do anything with a bridge going over to Bridgestone, maybe something can be done at Glen Burnie. Cyclists don't use Martin Luther King frequently, because there's so much traffic. Cyclists, avid cyclists and other people who want to safely get into the city, use Trent Road, and they use Country Club Road. What are the conditions of those two roads for cyclists? Okay, I'll tell you what they are. They're not good, okay? From Pembroke to Wedgewood, 1.4 miles over the bridge is two lanes, and there's a lot of traffic on it, and there's a lot of cyclists on it, and there's no room. Two feet of additional berm on that road is a matter of life and death, okay? The same is true for a section of Trent Road. So, I would suggest to you that I'm all for plans, I'm all for funding, but when it comes to road improvements, six inches of berm, one foot of berm, 18 inches of berm, is life and death. And so, when you go to road improvements and you think about right-of-ways, where is your right-of-way? Where can you put a line? It's key. And I would urge the board to look at those kinds of things completely practically on road improvements, apart from planning, funding that you need. I understand that six inches of asphalt for a mile and four tenths is a lot of money, but it saves lives, and that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim, do you have anything else on your presentation?
I'd like to add a little bit to what he said. It's two and a half miles from my house in the historic Riverside neighborhood to the Food Lion, and there is a nice wide bike lane that attaches Simmons Street to Neuse Boulevard. Unfortunately, nobody ever keeps it clean, so nobody knows it's there. I remember they, they were talking about putting a bike lane out there, and they found out there was one already there, all they had to do was keep the grass off of it. So, bike lanes are a wonderful, wonderful thing for connecting people from point A to point B, but you have to maintain them, and that's where we're gonna find a big challenge. Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am, 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 let me ask you a question, please.
Yes.
Where particularly on Simmons Street are you saying there's a bike trail?
No, 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 no. It's on Glen Burnie Road, it attaches Oaks Road to Neuse Boulevard, and there is no bike lane on Simmons Street. So, if you live on Simmons Street in the Forest Park area, or, or say, the apartment complex, and you wanna take your bicycle to Piggly Wiggly, there is no bicycle lane there.
Thank you.
Mr. Hughes, what action did you want the board to take on this presentation, if any? Yes, sir?
Mayor, just a few comments. There was quite a bit that was said. I don't know that we have enough time to unpack all that tonight, but I'm gonna try a few things. So, Alderman Bingo, I believe the police department does an annual bike safety training, and we probably have some old video, if I remember, of that.
Well, I'm more concerned about the drivers than I am the bikers. I'm not concerned about...
Oh, you're talking about training drivers?
Oh, yes, because they don't understand the etiquette.
Yeah, we definitely don't have enough time for that.
Yeah, they don't know the etiquette of the road when a bike or a cyclist is coming, they don't understand to move out the way, and that's what I was talking about.
To Alderwoman Harris's comment about carts, we've had this friendly banter back and forth between city and county, at least for eight years since I've been on here, and probably a little bit before that. The county operates and essentially owns carts. If we go to the county and say, "We don't think you're doing enough, or you need to do better, or you need to add something," they're gonna look to us and say, "What is the city willing to pay for that additional service?"
That's what I'm talking about, where we come as a plan, and we have to put money towards it.
Because the, Kim, if I remember correctly, they receive the federal and the state funding for that particular program. So, we had talked about in the past, the city calls carts, if you think about it, has the word "rule" in their name. We had thought about, well, do we need to do an urban-type system? We had thought about, well, do we need to do an urban-type system within the city? But then there's conflicts on who's actually going to get that funding, so it could be something where we'd be stepping out on our own because there's already funding coming to the county for transportation. So it's part of that list that we need to add when we have a conversation with the county. But one thing that I did hear, and I'll just mention it for the county commissioners' meeting, the presentation for carts, and I believe it's in their budget, I don't think, did they approve it last night? I'm not sure, but it's in their budget, it's built in their budget, the manager recommended budget, that they will have two different color buses. For example, right now, it's white with blue logo. They will have a blue bus with a white logo to help identify the route. Everybody thinks that the route is the way to go. You know, sometimes you can be on a carts bus and you can actually pass one coming in the same direction at the same stop. So there's a lot of issues there that they're working on to be addressed. I will tell you that Morehead, Kim and I visited with a couple of board members of Morehead City Transportation, I don't remember the name of it, is it CATS?
CCAT.
CCATS.
And this park in County is important.
So they actually make a run to Raleigh at least once a week, maybe more. They stop by here, they get calls from people in the Craven County, Pamlico area to actually get transportation service here. So they do a more regional-type transportation, like you were talking about. So it's something that conversation should be had with them as well.
Okay.
It's a very complex issue, though, there's no doubt. But actually, what I was getting at with that is they actually eliminated their route in the CCATS area. They only do on-call service, they don't do a route anymore. So I went into that meeting thinking, let's find all about your routes because I want to see a bus line throughout the city going to different places. They actually eliminated it. So that's another reason why there's a whole lot more information that needs to be had. But the county, I will say, has done a great job recently. They've added the route to, I think, C-1A, we helped assist with that funding to get people to the industrial park from a worker's standpoint. The last thing I will say is I think one tremendous benefit of this plan when we get it back is we would then be able to take this and present this to the public and say, here's the, well, it was $13 million back then, here's the $17 million plan today. How bad do you really want the citizens of New Bern? It's on your ballot, vote, yes or no? Do you want it? If you do, we'll do all of it right now. If you don't, then we're going to have to continue to piecemeal it unless you're willing to take up the difference in that delta of the tax revenue.
To your point, though, you said you would be interested to seeing some sort of bus service?
Well, I think that's what carts is looking to do, is make their, because there's a bus service right now. Did you know that?
No. So when I think of buses, I'm thinking of I'm getting on there, I'm sliding in my little cart, or I'm paying my dollar like back where I'm from in New York. Was it, like, I just never understood that when people would ask, is our streets not wide enough to have a bus? Like, why don't we have any type of buses?
So did you know that there's a bus stop right across from City Hall?
I, no, I did not.
Okay, there's a sign there, it's about maybe this big. There's a sign there right outside of City Hall that says carts bus stop. So that's one improvement that we're looking to make. The other, they've had some assistance with Jeff and with Amanda to do bus stations throughout the city. But we start getting to government regulations. So when you have a bus station, sometimes you have to have a pull-off, a cut in the curb. You know, when we talk about adding sidewalk to the side of a street, you know, George, what was the cost of that plan for Trent Road when we talked about three-laning just these few areas along Trent Road? It was like $400,000 just for the plan, I believe. So I mean, that's just to get the engineering done to add the third lane in those several portions. So that's the frustrating part of being from the private side, working in a public industry, is if you wanted something done, you typically go do it. Things move a lot slower in government as we're sitting here tonight, 2009, or 2009, talking about a plan and update in 2021. Now, understand that there's been a lot of that that's been implemented, but some of that's been done by development, new development, like the Harris Teeter, for example. There are sidewalks on both sides of the Harris Teeter parcel. Not everybody uses it, which is another education tool that we need to make because I still see people walking the shoulder of the road even when there's been sidewalks installed. Sorry for all that.
No, so but to add to what you're saying, so is, I mean, with the implementation of certain things, like, where's the data coming from in regards to whether we technically need bike lanes? Is it just the request of citizens? Or like, where's the data of like, okay, obviously, this is a necessity to even, you know, fatten the desire of making sure that, you know, we can implement the plan that, you know, is brought to us? Because I agree, I mean, I'm all about, you know, planning, but I would love, you know, like this gentleman said, you know, for us to be able to implement it, but like, you know, Odom said, you know, having that ability to say, hey, if this is something that's a necessity, you know, vote on it so we can get it. But I just wanted to know that part of it in regards to the data, like the request or...
Sure. So we, you know, do some regular public outreach, and that's one of the things that we're seeing now, not just in our area, but across the state and across the country. So we're really looking towards alternative modes of transportation. People are wanting to get away from vehicular traffic. They want to walk around areas, they want to utilize trails, they want to ride their bikes. So we're seeing that push overall, you know, across the country, but in our area, we hear this on a regular basis, just like we hear we need better transit services. We hear this conversation and dialogue within our community all the time. So we, as the transportation planning organization, want to provide the infrastructure and the foundation for the infrastructure in every way that we can, and this is one of the ways that we can.
Well, thank you for your work.
No, I thank you so much. If I could just say one more thing to our members of the public, when we have these public outreach sessions, we really encourage you all to come and see. We have so many projects that we do these public outreaches all over the city, and, you know, we get a handful of people that come, and nobody really has any comments, and then something goes out on the media or social media, and all of a sudden, we have all this backlash, which we love to get, we love to hear from you. But if you could come and participate on the front end, that would make our planning process, you know, a lot easier. So we encourage everyone to come, and so please share with, you know, with your words and your constituents and so on.
Mr. Chairman, as our representative, do you want the boards to endorse this, or do you?
I mean, this already, the decision's already been made to have it, that they're going to present it. I just wanted, Kim, to clarify that this is an update to the existing plan. This is not a new plan.
It is, that is what it is. We're taking the existing plan, and they will go through the existing plan, the consulting firm. So, and they'll take pieces of that, I'm sure. They're a renowned consulting firm for this type of bicycle pedestrian work, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to that. How long do you think the report will take?
We're going to start next month and anticipate having a final in March of next year.
Okay.
So we'll come back to the board early next year with a draft plan, and we'll have some public involvement with the draft plan to get, you know, input and comments and make adjustments from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, office.
Let's go to item number nine.
Mayor, item nine is to consider adopting a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for 135 Hillmont Road. Sandra Rogers has submitted an offer of $6,750 to purchase the vacant lot at 135 Hillmont. The tax value of the property is $13,500, and this offer represents 50% of the value. The property was acquired by the city and county in May of 2019 through tax foreclosure. The unpaid taxes at that time were $6,182.47. If the property is sold for the initial bid, the city is projected to receive $2,901.42, and the county is projected to receive $3,848.58 from the proceeds. Ms. Rogers has indicated that she has spoken with Development Services about her plans for the property, a memo is attached. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board, any questions?
Yep.
I got one question. Mr. Ruggieri, is he still here? This is, I know this is in reference to the upset bid process, but if a city-owned parcel does not pass or the soil tests, what limitations is put on that property? Or can a citizen's purchase want to put a bid on that property anyway? Is there any limitations from your department that nothing can be developed on that land because of the soil, or what? How is that treated for?
Yeah, well, the nature of the upset bid process is first and foremost, the Board of Alderman decided it's surplus and has no, there's no use, there's no city use for the property. From that point on, it's surplus property, and it goes through that bid. There's no conditions attached to it. There's no promises made on the city's behalf of what can and cannot be built. It's essentially buyer beware. And, but, you know, because we've been doing this for a few years now, almost everybody comes to my office and asks questions about what they can do and what they can't do. So we answer all those questions zoning-wise. But subsurface conditions, we don't really, unless we know something just from, you know, owning the property or just experience, and some people know they've cleaned it up. If we don't know anything about the property, we don't do any subsurface testing or any kind of environmental, any kind of environmental testing or anything like that. It's simply surplus and a buyer beware situation. But for the most part, everybody comes to the office and asks questions about the property, the zoning setbacks, well, how many units they can get on at density like that. And we'll offer all that information up, obviously.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to know because I know it said soil testing required, you know, maybe the possibility of that for that.
Yeah, it is a possibility, yes.
All right, okay. Well, if there's no more questions, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for 135 Hillmont Road.
Second.
Motion and second, is there a discussion? Seeing on several calls, starting with Alderman Bingo.
Alderman Bingo?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries item number 10.
Mayor, item number 10 is to consider a resolution approving a lease agreement for the Area Day Reporting Program for Youth for 504 Totten Drive. This lease is for a 12-month period beginning July 1st at a rate of $1 per year. A memo from George Charles is attached. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
How do we go about determining what the lease is going to be? I mean, I see some here that we're doing it for a dollar, which I don't know if I have a concern about, and then there's others that we do for $500. I mean, who, how do you go about?
Yes, sir. I don't mind that, Mayor, members of the board, the default rule that prior boards have set forward is that surplus rental property that's used for a public purpose comes at a dollar a year, as long as the city is getting that public service. The lease provides typically for a one-year term, and the tenant pays for the insurance and all utilities. We had an exception with the farmer's market, which may be what you're thinking of, is that lease also comes with a general obligation to maintain. And we had a farmer's market lease where some general maintenance was deferred over time, so we added to that lease to make up the difference. But generally, it's a dollar a year.
So Attorney Davis, with the city-owned property, the city is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that building?
Yes, ma'am. The structure, the roof, HVAC, the big-ticket items, tenants are typically responsible for just general maintenance.
I know in the case of the Area Day Reporting, I know that they paid for roof replacement seven or eight years ago, so there are times when they get funding that they make improvements.
Mayor, if no one else has anything, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the lease agreement with the Area Day Reporting Program for Youth for 504 Totten Drive.
Second. Motion and second, is there further discussion on this item? Seeing on several calls, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingo?
Yes.
Motion carries item number 11.
Next item is to consider a resolution approving a lease agreement with State Employees Credit Union for the ATM located in the parking lot at 302 Craven Street. This ATM provides a needed service for those who live and work in the downtown area. The proposed lease is for a period of 12 months, beginning July 1st, at a rate of $225 a month. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Support and questions?
No, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving a lease agreement with State Employees Credit Union for the ATM located in the parking lot at 302 Craven Street.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing on several calls, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingo?
Yes.
Motion carries item number 12.
Mayor, this item is to consider a resolution approving a lease agreement with Promise Place for 408 Hancock. Promise Place contacted the city in July 2020 regarding its need to temporarily store items that would be donated to citizens through the height of the COVID pandemic. The lease, just shy of 12 months, was approved by the board on July 28, 2020 for the use of the city-owned property located at 408 Hancock at a rate of $1 for the term of the lease. This property is the old Fireman's Museum. The Promise Place has recently expressed interest in additional one-year lease through June 30, 2022. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board, any questions?
I do. You know, originally, when, I believe Alderman Kinsey brought this to our attention.
No, me.
Oh, was you?
Kinsey was having the furniture out of there, and then me with Promise Place, and they did say they may need for almost two years, but we started with the one to see what was going on.
Correct. And they were putting out, you know, furniture and helping people like that. But to my understanding, and I believe Mr. Hughes may have some pictures, I mean, they're just using it as a storage bin. And now, there's just boxes of stuff in there. It's not really serving a purpose to the public. And I know there's other entities that would like to use the space and rent the space or whatever, such as the African-American Heritage Group has asked several times about that space. And if they're not serving the purpose which they originally came to us for, which was to provide furniture and things need, I don't know if you want to share some of those pictures with the rest of the Aldermen, but it concerned me that it was just storage boxes.
Have we spoken to Joshua Promise Place in regards to that, or what was going on?
I don't know if Public Works has spoken to them about that or not. Mr. Charles?
Well, their lease is through Jig July 28th. We can certainly bring this back at another time.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you let me reach out to them, since Promise Place is in my ward, just get an understanding, so I have, because I brought it to the board last year. If we could just table this to the next meeting, I can follow up with him tomorrow. Because if they're not, okay. Boom.
Motion and a second?
Yes.
Row call or?
Voice, 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 fine.
Motion, second, and, okay. On favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
All votes say aye. Motion carries.
All right, that would be it.
Let's go to item 13.
Mayor, this item is to consider a resolution approving a lease agreement with Habitat for Humanity in Greater New Bern for 928 George Street. The proposed lease term is for a period of 12 months, beginning on July 1st, at a rate of $1 per year.
I'd like to speak to this as well. I talked to Zeb Huff today, and as you know, that we have been working, gosh, no, it's three-plus years to donate that annexed building they were renting to RCS, and they were going to take over. And so there's been issues with the title, and we've worked through it. Scott will tell you, he has spent thousands of dollars of hours researching that. We've turned it over to them, and they're handling it. So I talked to Zeb today, I said, hey, what's the deal here? And they finally have some attorneys working on it. So we kind of agreed to give them a six-month lease instead of a year lease, and that'll kind of push them to the point where they need to get this done so they can take over that building and we can be done with it. So my, I would like to make an alternate motion that we...
Hold on, hold on, one second. You're saying, so this is Habitat?
Yes.
So Habitat is renting from?
The city.
From the city, but the building is over by RCS?
Yeah, it's right there behind, it's the original RCS building. They call it the annex.
Right, I've seen it. So is RCS going to take it over and manage it?
Yes, they want, they're going to own, well, they're in there now, and they're just going to own it.
Okay, so Habitat needs to get their stuff out, you're saying?
No, 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 Habitat, oh, excuse me, I'm saying Habitat. This is the property at George Street. Now I'm totally confused. Should this have been RCS or should this have been Habitat? Now I'm totally confused. I'm seeing, you're right. Well, that's the address, isn't that the address?
I may be wrong, but I think Habitat, before Mike got here, Habitat had that building. They were using it for storage.
Okay, it's the old curb market.
They didn't want it anymore.
Okay.
So RCS stepped up and said, we would like to have that because it's adjacent to our property.
Right, right.
And from that point forward, I think you were just working on the title and it was damaged and we had FEMA reimbursement that was in the midst, but I think it is, the lease is with Habitat.
I believe it is.
And not with that, okay. So then I totally withdraw that because this was totally confusing and Zeb called me today.
I'm still confused then. So if it's the building over by RCS, who's in it? Habitat?
Habitat.
So is Habitat going to buy this building?
Well, I think it was RCS was going to take that whole area over.
And so once they do that, we no longer need to have a lease, that's going to be between RCS and Habitat?
Yes, ma'am. You want to table this for?
Yes. That we table this?
Don't Habitat use that for a workshop?
They do not. The RCS uses the old annex behind it as a workshop there.
Is there a motion? I stand in the same. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries out number 15?
14.
14.
Hopefully we get this one passed.
Mayor, this item is to consider a resolution approving a lease agreement for 1602 and 1604 High Street. The two lots were acquired by the city in 2002 and 2003 through the FEMA buyout program. As a result, the lots are bound by FEMA restrictions that prohibit future development. To reduce the cost and labor associated with maintaining city-owned lots, staff has negotiated a 10-year lease with the adjacent property owner, David Dawson, of 1600 High Street at a rate of $1 per year. The lease restricts the property to recreation and open space use and requires Mr. Dawson to retain, maintain the property. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is more have any questions?
Just, I have a question. There's really no downside, but Scott, does that lease agreement stay with the person that's renting, that's owning the adjacent property or does it stay with the property?
Just with this particular owner.
So if that owner leaves, the next person that occupies that property is not required to maintain this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So I have, after you, I have a question too. I have a question too. So with the restrictions, I know it's listed in the restrictions here what can be put on that property, but who's going to, is the city going to maintain that to see if they're, if this person is binding by the restrictions?
We have, we have to.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. And then, so we can't sell the property to them?
No, ma'am.
Because it's the?
FEMA buyout program. The prior, there's a prior home there, those folks got their money, the land comes to the city and the city's the trustee of that property to the end of the wall.
Okay. I thought for some reason that you, it was either, you can either donate or it could be sold, but you can't do nothing with it. Okay. Interesting.
Did we get a motion on this?
No, I'm going with it. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the lease agreement for 1602 and 1604 High Street.
Second.
Motion and second is in our discussion. Seeing on several calls starting with Alderman Beagle.
Alderman Beagle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries out number 15.
Mayor, the next item on the agenda is to discuss options for Gaston Boulevard and Broad Street properties. The city attorney will lead the discussion.
Mayor, members of the board, you require, the city acquired the property that fronts on Broad between Third and Gaston Boulevard. There are three structures on that property, the Gant Sandwich Shop, the Black Swan, and I call it the Little Brick House. We are at a point where staff needs some direction with respect to clearing those, that property and what to do with those structures, those three structures. There are various options. I'll take the easy one first. The Little Brick House, the redevelopment commission has expressed some interest in relocating that building, using it for public purpose. And I believe they'll be voting on that issue tomorrow night, thank you. So if that happens, you will see an item on your next agenda to transfer title to the physical house itself, which will be personal property once it's removed from the lot, and conveying that to the redevelopment commission. The Gant Sandwich Shop can, needs to be demolished or relocated. We don't know exactly what the most efficient means might be for that. Some folks have expressed an interest in trying to relocate it, others to demolish it. Our suggestion to you is to direct staff to prepare an RFP to accept bids to simply remove the structure from the property, whether that's by demolition or relocation matters not to you, simply that it is removed from the site and then folks are free to submit a bid for a demolition cost or a payment potentially to buy the structure and relocate it. The Black Swan is a more challenging issue. And I'll defer to staff on some of the math to relocate that. Staff has had an idea to relocate that structure down First Street to the portion of the lot where the city redevelopment offices are on First, the corner of First and Trent. The general expense to do that is roughly $110,000 to move that house and rebuild the porch on that vacant lot with the thought that once the building is set on a foundation and its porch reconstructed, that the city would then accept bids from homeowners who would want to acquire that property and continue the rehabilitation. That becomes a bit of a project, but that is certainly an option. Another option is to, just like the Gant Sandwich Shop, open it up to the public to demolish or relocate. And that rounds out your options for the various three structures.
Scott, has staff been inside the big two-story building and is it, is it in good shape or?
Staff has assessed the structure, but there are some issues on the porch, but from what they've seen?
Structurally sound?
Other areas, yes.
And so the property you're talking about relocating it to, excuse me, is that city-owned property already?
It is city-owned property.
See, the Eleanor Marshall School, where the front of the school was?
Well, that's a good option for that piece of property, especially, I mean, somebody, that's a nice old house. Somebody would be very much interested in buying that house once we relocate it. I've always had an issue with tearing that old building down.
Understood. And we're probably at a point too where staff may need to do a little more due diligence, just making sure the foundation, making sure, double sure that if we, if we take on that project, that the building is going to survive the relocation.
My question for this would be, where is the funds coming from if we decide to do anything in regards to these buildings on this property? Where does that, oh, the general fund? And so what's those numbers looking like if we were to handle the whole process instead of bidding it out?
Well, what we would, if we demolished ourselves, I believe the back-of-the-envelope number for the Gant Sandwich Shop is $10,000. And possibly if someone wants to take on the challenge of relocating that, then the cost might be zero.
Okay.
And the anticipated plan for the Little Brick Building would be that if the city gives that to the redevelopment commission, all those costs are borne by the commission.
Mr. City Manager, what do you recommend that we do with the Gant Building? Just exactly what the attorney said, bid it out?
That's what we recommend, yes.
Then that's what I think we should do. What do you recommend we do with the Black Swan?
Can I get the rest of the information I was asking for? Well, I wasn't done, I was waiting. There's three, three structures, I'm sorry. Can I get that last amount, please?
The cost to demolish the Black Swan would be, in-house, would be approximately $32,000.
Okay. I was just, I was just wondering, I just wanted to know the cost, if you send out and nothing happens, we still have to figure it out in that regard, so I wanted to know what the demolition was.
Yes, ma'am.
But you said the brick building, the redevelopment would want to take over, right?
That's what we anticipate. And then they would be responsible for the demolition slash relocation, and there would be no cost for that.
Okay. And then the, the Black Swan is the one that Alderman Astor was talking about, about moving it over to the other location and possibly selling it?
Yes, ma'am. And again, I don't know that I have a recommendation or staff has a recommendation on that. You could do it certainly in a two-step process. You could apply the same methodology for the Gant Sandwich Shop and just see if someone shows up who would like to try to move it privately. And then if that doesn't pan out, then you could reconsider your remaining options.
Okay.
But, are you certain?
Yeah, go ahead.
But you said you thought it'd be about $100,000 if we paid to have it relocated? Did I hear that?
Yes, sir. 110 is the best guess at this point, to relocate and put it on a foundation and reconstruct the porch that's damaged and that would be damaged by the move.
And then put it for sale or something?
So then you've got what we call a cold dark shell.
Okay.
You've got a structure that will need modern electric, modern plumbing, et cetera, landscaping, beautification to be livable.
So do you, that's, that's another one that you suggest about putting an RFP out for?
Well, that would be an idea. In lieu of the city relocating it and taking on that project, a first step could be to put out a request for proposals to see if somebody in the community wanted to do the exact same thing privately to a different lot, or maybe even buy that lot from the city and put it on the same place without city staff having to own that project.
Right, so, yeah, because I was thinking on the redevelopment side, not with the commission, I'm just saying real estate side, that if we put it out and someone wants to purchase it, maybe that's all included if that's something we agree on and that's a done deal and then we don't have to worry about it. So maybe having that option to put it out to see if someone would, then we know to invest that $100,000 for moving it. So I would say do that option of putting it out first to see who wants it and then decide on if we're going to pay any money to demolish the buildings. That's what I think is that we should do.
Yeah, well, I'm all in favor of whatever we have to do to save the old house.
Yes, sir.
You know, whether somebody wants to take, if we give it to somebody to let them pay to move it off and put it on another lot, or we end up having to do it ourselves, it's just a beautiful house and it would be nice to, so whatever, whatever we have to do to...
And we don't know what the, you know, I would think the market would bear, if we had 110, I would think the market would bear somebody to buy it for 110 so we'd get our money back.
Get our money back.
What we're doing, and then they'd have to, they'd have to invest quite a bit.
Is there any historic miss to this building?
Yes.
Oh, there is?
Oh, yeah. What's the name of the house? Oh, yeah. Oh, it's the Tisdale House.
So is there any regulations in regards to that one?
No, it has no historic value other than local.
Okay, gotcha. That's what I was going to add.
Alderman Odom, the only thing I was going to ask, Mayor, is it may require more work on staff's behalf, but I do think that salvaging the house, putting it on a parcel that would then become part of the tax roll would be generating revenue back to the city. I just want to make sure that we've done our due diligence, that we don't pay $110,000 to move this house and then somebody goes in there and says it's going to take $300,000 to get it to be worth $250,000.
Right.
So I think once we were able to cover that, I would be perfectly fine with going that route.
Right. I agree.
So would you be willing to, I'm sorry, go ahead. Would you be willing to like, just to give it to somebody to move it off the property?
Yeah, but I think if we do that, they, they don't have to. They could just get halfway down the road and say this doesn't work and they can tear it down. There's no guarantees that they would salvage it.
It's gone off the property, that, it meets our objective.
I thought you, I thought you wanted to say that.
Well, I did. If they choose not to, it's theirs at that point then.
Well, I was, I was going to say that. What if someone gets it over to, or we get it over to that lot and they buy it, like you said, and then they just demolish it?
And what happens halfway through the move, it falls in the middle of the street?
We can put covenants, where's mine?
Can, can we do that?
Jeff, can, Jerry, can't we put covenants on that house?
If you own it.
Well, the city would own it.
Yeah.
The city do own it.
Possibly, yes.
Do. Well, but I do, I mean, I thought you could put, even if it's not in the historic district, couldn't you put covenants on the deeds or restrictions on the deeds? Oh, redevelopment. It's not in the redevelopment commission. It's not in the redevelopment. It's not in the redevelopment.
It is the redevelopment.
Well, it's not if you move it.
No, once you move it, once you move it.
No.
Okay.
Unless you move it into it.
So Scott, what is the, are we in for a time crunch here because?
Well, no, no, ma'am. We're at a point where staff needs some direction. Let's take the low-hanging fruit first. We're going to hear from redevelopment commission and probably, probably on the next agenda, we'll deal with the Little Brick House. If you can give staff some direction as to the Gant Sandwich Shop to test the waters with an RFP, and again, we don't have to accept anything, we can just start the process and see what it presents to you. And then maybe to Alderman Odom's point, if you'd like some more information on the Black Swan, maybe staff can take the next two weeks to see if they can start answering the question, what might it be worth once it's relocated to that new site and livable to see if the delta makes sense for someone privately to invest that money?
Last thing, for the Gant Sandwich Shop, it used to be a restaurant, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So there is nothing that Parks and Recs can pick this up and put it somewhere and when we're having all these events?
There's no equipment, everything's gone.
The equipment conveyed with the previous tenant.
So they took everything out.
Okay. But it'd be cheaper to get some new, I'm just thinking of like, what can we as a city do with it, you know, off this property, but maybe, you know, just thinking about all the exciting things that we do entertainment-wise to, you know, use it and then have someone to pop up and, you know, do food and stuff, I don't know. You know, I'm always thinking of, trying to... It would really be nice. Huh? It would really be nice if the redevelopment commission had the money to actually take this house and renovate it.
The, the Black Swan House, the big house?
The Black Swan.
Well, they'd have to renovate it in a spot. They'd have to have a lot.
I know, I'm saying, wow. But the city does, if, if they're, if they're going to move it over to where, if we move it over to where First Ave is, right, you said on the city lot?
It is, but it's outside the redevelopment area.
It's not in the redevelopment commission. Based on what we agreed the plan is, but can't they come back and we update the redevelopment area?
Put it on the old Days Inn property.
There you go. What'd you say?
There you go.
Put it on the Pollock Street side of the old Days Inn property.
The Pollock Street side? Take away the parking?
Procedurally, the, the pink nickies, staff can, based on the direction of the board, do like they do on any other pieces, surplus property, whatever. How does that process generally, I mean, Thursday morning?
If this were a typical, I'm going to call it an unfit dwelling, not to slight that structure, but staff would simply solicit bids because this falls outside of the public bid requirements. They would solicit bids from local demolition contractors, take the best price and have it demolished. In this case, I think this might merit a little more public advertisement to get the word out so folks know that if they want to be a pioneer, they may have an opportunity to acquire the structure and rather than demolish it, relocate it somewhere else.
Okay, so are we going to be done with that in the next two weeks or?
If that's the, well, it's going to take a while for staff to draw up that scope, then get the word out, so I would imagine 30 to 45 days to have an answer for that.
So the scope is to have the building removed, slab?
One way or another.
Slab remains because we don't want to lose impervious surface credits. And we want it moved within whatever timeframe.
30 days after, you know, weather permitting, 30 days after the green light's been given.
Do they have to have, um, be bonded, or is there a certain requirement in regards to demolition, like Joe Smo just can't get it and just start banging it down, they actually have to, okay?
Be a qualified contractor.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yes, ma'am, good question, good question.
Not that time is of essence, I, I, let's, let's get going on this.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
What, what do we, let's, I mean, I'm not trying to expedite.
So do you need a motion for that, or that we put it under RFP?
Directions is fine, just so staff knows.
Let's move forward on the, um, Gant Sandwich Shop, so we can put an RFP if somebody wants it, let them take it, if not, find somebody to demolish it, and then on the Black Swan, I'd like the additional information, let's talk to somebody and get that, and then...
Can I just throw, whoa, one thing in there too? If through all of this, because we know this property and the history, if anything is sold from this, right, and we get any income, um, outside of having to, you know, if we get any profit?
Sure.
What are we going to do with the profit?
Go back into the...
Improve the fields at Henderson Park.
Sounds good to me.
Works for me too.
They, they should be improved anyway.
I think that's a good idea.
Talking to Parks and Rec, they should be improved anyway.
Okay.
All right, you got directions?
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let's go to appointments, I'll come in.
Yes, sir, um, I would like, uh, I have an appointment to the civil service board, but I would first like to thank Canell Humphrey for her service, she cannot be reappointed, so at this time, I'd like to appoint Dr. Amy James, um, to that seat.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion, standing on all favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Any other appointments?
No, sir.
All women carries.
I do have, um, an appointment for the same board, but I don't have the individual yet, um, so if there's anyone that is interested in serving on the civil service board, please reach out to me, um, because I would like to, um, get to know you before I appoint you. I know we do have a list of individuals, but they did serve, so I was just trying to get the appetite of citizens that may have never served and would like to serve, because you can't do it consecutively. So, please reach out to me if you are interested in serving on that board. You cannot have volunteered for the PD in the last three years, um, you have to live within the city, and I think that was the only two, right Brenda? I know was, you couldn't serve, um, or you can't be elected official.
You can't be an employee.
Right, employee, elected official, have to live in the city, and have not volunteered with the PD in the last three years, and that's it, thank you.
Alderman, ask.
I do not have any appointments tonight, sir.
Alderman, best.
None, sir.
Alderman, third.
Uh, yes, sir, I too have a opening on the police civil service board, I'd like to appoint, uh, Leslie Hunter, Leslie is the vice president of HR, Carolina East, I think she'd be a great asset to that board.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion, seeing on all favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Okay, any other appointments at this time? Attorneys report?
Nothing important, not mayor.
City managers report?
I'd like to give you a few updates, mayor. First item is the city hall elevator update, we got an update from the architect, uh, he anticipates a COA on this project by the middle of June, he estimates the bid opening to be, uh, to occur by August thirty-first of this year, construction to begin, uh, the first of October, and for the project to be complete, uh, by the end of June of twenty twenty-two, um, and he does not anticipate at this time an increase in, in the, uh, the estimated amount, so that's where we stand on that. Next item is, um, we had a very good, uh, meeting with MetroNet last week to discuss them coming to town, the goal is for them to, to actually start their work the first of October, they anticipate signing up, or actually having new customers on their system by around April, so when they come, they're going to hit the ground and they're going to really roll, uh, so we'll let you know also that we plan on having MetroNet come and make a brief presentation at the second meeting in August to, to give an idea of what to expect, uh, so it's going to be a lot of exciting times, uh, we're going to be meeting with MetroNet on a regular basis, Charlie is doing a great job talking with them, and so this is really something exciting for the city. And the next item is, as, as you know, we'll be going through the redistricting process, we've had conversations with Alice, if you would like to go ahead and schedule a work session now, so we can get the ball rolling, even though the full numbers won't be available until August, at least we'll have an idea of where things currently stand, we can go ahead and set up a work session for you.
So you're saying do it after August?
We can do it at any time, we, we can do it now to get started, because I have a feeling we're going to be meeting a few times on this.
Okay. So you're saying we should do a work session before August?
Sure.
If you'd like for us to bring this up again at the next meeting, we can do that.
Why don't we get some, yes, send us some dates, Jamie, I mean, your schedule seems to be...
Well, the only thing is, is, um, I have my, another major surgery coming up at the end of July, and I'll be out for eight weeks, so I could be Zoom, I don't want to inconvenience, but this is very important, so if we can do something before that date, just to kind of get it on the books, and then...
July twentieth?
Tuesday, what time, in the evening, or day?
I won't be in town, but that's fine, you can be able to start without it.
We don't want to do it.
I, I mean, I'm...
June twenty-ninth?
Is that, oh, is that our next meeting?
I'm just picking Tuesday nights.
I know, but is that, that's not our next meeting.
Wait a minute, you, you're talking about in June?
Yeah, I can do June twenty-ninth.
At least it'll start the conversation, um, our next meeting would be, what, June twenty-second?
No, fifteen, so we literally, every Tuesday of, of June, we would...
Yeah, you got one on the fifteenth and the twenty-second already.
Right, yes. So you say you don't want to do the twenty-ninth? Too many Tuesdays?
Well, y'all pick a date and let me know.
I'm good with the two Tuesdays.
I'm good with the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, I'm good the twenty-ninth, and I'm good with the twenty-ninth.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we call for a work session at Stanley, at, uh, West New Bern Recreation Center, six P M., June twenty-ninth, to discuss redistricting.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion, seeing on all favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
That's all I have, mayor.
Okay, um, let's see, going into new business, uh, my, I'm going to start this off, because I want to, I want to wish, uh, a friend of mine here on the, not, I, I'll give him my friends, but, um, my fellow Gemini, all of them, Supreme being, I, I really want to wish you a happy birthday tomorrow.
Oh, mayor, I want to wish you a happy birthday tomorrow as well.
Do you guys have the same birthday?
We do.
Why did you not, why don't we bring cakes?
Who's older?
As mayor, may I actually say, that goes without saying.
He's my elder.
Well, happy birthday.
But I, I do have to make this comment for the mayor, because it is a Guinness, Guinness Book of World Records issue, but his mother, our mayor, his mother, and two of his children, all born on June the ninth, so four people in one family on that date, and, and then I get to share it as well, so happy birthday, mayor.
Happy birthday to you.
Awesome.
To you too.
I'm going to just go ahead and start this out with, with all being, if you...
I got a couple, I just have...
...the McCarter House, or any, any of those issues over there?
Uh, yeah, we did, as a matter of fact, that's fine, let's start with that, so the mayor and I did a little touring today, throughout, uh, parts of, of my ward, and we came upon the McCarter House, and the windows are broken out, um, you know, it's just in bad shape, and we are coming down on citizens in that area about their properties, we should be maintaining our property as well, so I would like that attention be put to that, I mean, there's probably what, three or four windows we saw there that were, that were broken, so, uh, we really do need to pay some attention to that, so I'd like for that to be, um, looked at. Also to, um, uh, chief, is he here, Chief Gallagher, um, can we talk a little bit about the speeding on North Craven Street? I understand that, um, Captain Daniels has been working on it, I've been working with a citizen who is still not happy about the speeding on North Craven Street, she has asked me several times for speed bumps, I'm sorry to say that I'm not a fan of speed bumps, because if I do them on North Craven Street, I might as well have to do them in the rest of the city, I don't think that's fair, but there are some other options, so can you update me on what's going on? I know you've set some speed bots, you know, in that area.
Yes, we have, um, I have spoken with that civic league, um, the residents are very passionate, um, about that safety, um, and to a person, they all, uh, provided anecdotal information that, um, there were quite a number of incidences that, uh, reflected high speeds. In response to that, we did a multitude of things, two of which I can speak to, uh, one of which was deploy, uh, officers, um, in the area to run radar. We did not experience quite the same level of law violators in terms of speeding, um, as was directed to us, but quite candidly, when people see police officers, they generally slow down, um, so we did install, um, a speed monitor that ran from, get the dates right, um, from, uh, April twenty-sixth through May second, and it captured the speeds going both northbound and southbound during that whole time, twenty-four seven, and what we, uh, gathered, the data that we have, is that the average speed, um, in both directions is roughly twenty-seven miles an hour. There were only two instances in which a vehicle exceeded, uh, forty-one miles an hour to forty-five miles an hour, one was at five o'clock northbound, and one was at ten A M. southbound, um, so, quite honestly, I don't have any data to support the comments provided to the PD with respect to the, um, traffic violators. I have spoken with George about different options, um, like yourself, I think some of them, um...
Hanging the stripes, you know, we talked about maybe doing some of that, that might be a more efficient way to, to slow down some things.
Traffic enforcement is one strategy, um, uh, the analogy I've given many is that, um, with respect to reducing speed, um, in a particular area or a particular stretch of road, it's much the same as a bug zapper, it works while they're there, but the moment you remove that, um, the situation returns to, um, uh, normal, um, again, the data does not support that there is a problem on Craven Street, at least with respect between the dates that I gave you.
Okay, um, can I have a written copy of what you just...
You can have mine right now.
Well, or just, if somebody will email it to me, I would appreciate that, I can send it on to the citizen, um, thank you very much, I appreciate that. I next want to mention that tonight, starting at eleven o'clock, uh, Chief Boyd and his staff will, or he will have his staff cleaning hydrants in the downtown area, so both residents and businesses, they try to do it eleven o'clock at night, but I just want to remind people, uh, anybody listening, that your water may be a little brown in the morning, but it'll, it'll be fine once you run it, so I just want to alert you, you're going to hear the...
Just let it run a little bit.
Yeah, run it a little bit, it'll be fine, it'll be good, and then, um, I also want to mention that, um, I'd like to officially welcome, uh, Ms. Tiffany Askew, who is the new executive director of the Housing Authority, I have not had the pleasure of meeting her yet, I look forward to meeting her in the next week, um, but would love to have her maybe come before this board, if they so choose, and, and, you know, introduce herself and let us get to know her, I think that would be a good, a good thing for us to do, so, um, I would, would like to, you know, have her here, and that's all I have, mayor.
All women here.
Yes, thank you, so my update would just be that the next time we see everybody would hopefully be on the streets for Juneteenth, um, so the Juneteenth Festival, again, I just want to remind everybody that ten A M. is the historical sign dedication, and I believe me, you, and Barbara donated for those signs, right?
Right.
So that's going to be, um, beautiful, you're going to get to know the history, um, and then eleven A M. we start at Stanley White, and we are going to do a walking parade, and again, like we said, we got the, um, Marine Corps Band, um, really excited, we're going to have the little golf carts, and we're going to have the, you know, king and queen, Miss Mama Sampson, and another elder, you know, leading the parade, and then the festivals start from twelve to eight, and fireworks at nine, and if you have any questions, please reach out to us at Juneteenth of New Bern, our website or Facebook is going to be amazing, we have so many vendors lined up, volunteers, we're really excited, a lot of talent on the stage, please, we need people to donate blood, um, you can sign up, all of this information is on Facebook, but then also, there is also going to be, Carolina East has partnered with us to do vaccinations, so it's either going to be Pfizer and Johnson and Johnson, or Johnson and Johnson and Moderna, either way, if you need to get vaccinated, please come out, we are going to have that available, and that's pretty much it, if you want to be a vendor or anything, just reach out, um, we still have a little bit of time for that, but we're going to be excited, and we hope everybody comes out, um, and enjoys, and if not, at least, come see the fireworks at nine o'clock, it's going to be awesome, so thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, Alderman, ask.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I just wanted really to start out by thanking this board for the support they gave the fire department, I reckon, last year, um, a couple days ago, there was a major structural fire in the Hardy Farm subdivision, uh, and when the fire crews from Thurman Road Fire Station arrived on the scene, they were able to start, start suppression right away, and when they arrived on the scene, they had a house that was well involved, if not fully involved, and then they had a house next to it that was on fire, so they were able to, uh, and, and on top of that, it was a, um, report of, um, people still in the house, so they were able, with the extra manpower, to, uh, initiate a search and, uh, possible rescue, uh, plus suppression, and the house next door, they did a fabulous job, and it's all a result of, because it was a ten-minute response time for the downtown truck and Township Seven's Mutual Aid to get on the scene, and there was no traffic, so, you can only imagine what it would have been if there had been traffic, and I also would like to say, take this opportunity to congratulate, um, five of our firemen, uh, Captain Tony Roberg, Captain Danny Jackson, uh, Captain Buddy Williams, Fire Specialist Ricky Weems, and, um, Fire Specialist, um, Robert Locklear, for all of them retiring on the end of, or sometime during this month, I think, I think their, their little retirement get-togethers on June eighteenth, I hired every one of these guys, and they're all going out with thirty years of service, so, um, I would like to congratulate them as well.
That is the extra money in the budget, you was talking about my...
That's exactly right.
You knew that was coming.
That's exactly right, so, and other than that, um, I think today, George Airport Road is officially finished, maybe, we got the lines and the stop bars and the turn, uh, arrows all put in, so it looks nice, you, you guys did a fabulous job, and the ditch project, I, I wanted to also say, is really coming along good, um, I was on site in Carolina Colors this week, looking at, uh, some of the work that's being done out there, and if you notice on, on the bypass, right before you get to the Pembroke, um, exit, there's a lot of equipment in there, and that's, they're in there doing those ditches in there now too, so the clean out is really going along, and, um, thanks again to George and his staff for, for, uh, taking care of all that for us, that's all I have, it's mayor.
Okay. Alderman, best.
Yes, mayor, um, Foster, as I always do, I, um, requested, city manager, especially this time of the year, it is just so hot outside and extreme heat, um, that, you know, that our employees that work outside, you know, to just make sure that you discuss that with your, with your staff, so that they'll be aware of what to look for in extreme exhaust, heat exhaustion, and so we can protect our, our employees, because they're our most valuable assets, um, and secondly, I know we're all been viewing in and listening to the news and seeing on the news, all of this workplace violence, the shootings, the killings, and so many people losing, it's so sad that so many people are losing their life, innocent people losing their lives, and I just want to, to bring it to this board and to you, Foster, and, you know, I hope that this is something that you would discuss with, with your department heads, on down to, to supervisors, how you can stress, if an employee comes to you with a complaint, please listen to that employee, and follow up on that, and that complaint, investigate it, because, and the reason why I say this is because I was, I retired out of the city, and I have had three city employees come to me, one was that they were so glad that they didn't have a mental issue, because they would have went postal, another one said they were about ready to go postal, and a third one also says that they took the chain up, they, they followed protocol, they followed the chain of command, and nothing was done, and that's why I'm, want to reiterate and say, please listen to our employees if they come to us, anyone with a complaint, investigate it, because we don't want something like we've been seeing on the news, and innocent people losing their lives, then we're something that we may be able, as a board, as a staff, city manager, or whomever, that we can eliminate those things happening in our workforce.
We will certainly reemphasize that with our department head and staff, and I will let you know that we've been proactive on the heat issues as well, we have a new safety coordinator, and he actually sent information out before Memorial Day this, this year, and so to make sure all of our staff have, uh, that information, and we're making sure that our staff are definitely hydrated and are, uh, out of the sun as much as possible in this humid summertime.
Well, it's, it's, you know, I just, I take a special interest when it comes to our employees, because like I said, I'm retired out of the city, and I do know that sometimes the employee gets looked over, and the supervisor word is taken over that employee, so I just want that to be addressed, and just, let's take our employees seriously, and, and, and let's follow up on any complaints that we may receive, and that's it.
Alderman, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The employee that told you that they were going to go postal, did you report it to anybody?
They're retired.
Did you report it to anybody?
They are retired.
Yeah, but still, I mean, retired people can come back and do damage, too.
They are retired. That's all I'm going to say. They are retired.
Alderman, Adam.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay, we need a close session.
No, sir.
Is there any other business to come before the new board, Alderman, this time?
We didn't sing happy birthday.
Motion to adjourn.
Come on, Jamie. Happy birthday to you.